And welcome to the June 17th Board of County Douglas County Board of County Commissioners Meeting on this is our business meeting at 5:30. We want to thank all those who are attending today and appreciate your patience as we worked out a few kinks here and there with some new Zoom security protocols. And I want to thank our IT staff and our administrative staff for getting those things figured out. We apologize for anybody who had to hit the website multiple times to get the right link. So thanks for being here. A couple of reminders as we continue to do our Zoom meetings in a time of social distancing. If visual aids are used during the meeting, the presenter will share the screen with the call. Participants will not be able to view them without a computer, smartphone, or tablet. All participants will be entered into the meeting with their audio muted, meaning the commission, the public will not be able to hear you. Presenters will be unmuted when their agenda item comes up. We ask that all online presenters use good conference call etiquette and mute their line when not speaking and introduce themselves each time they speak. If you have public comment on an agenda item or under a regular public or under our regular public comment section, we ask that you use the raise your hand function on Zoom. Staff will call on you, unmute you. We ask that speakers give their name and address for the minutes. The county does reserve the right to shut off a microphone or remove any speaker from a meeting if they are rude or inappropriate. The chat function has been disabled and a recording of this meeting will be available on our website after the meeting. Our first item is a proclamation. And I'll go ahead and read the Lawrence Juneteenth Celebration Proclamation. Whereas Juneteenth is the oldest known celebration of the ending of slavery dating back to June 19th, 1865, the day on which the Union soldiers landed at Galveston, Texas was news that the war had ended and that all slaves were now free, even though President Lincoln hadn't signed the Emancipation Proclamation two and a half years earlier. And whereas Juneteenth has become a tradition of celebrations that began following the reading of the proclamation by the by General Gordon Granger in 1865 that lasted over 150 years. And today is hosted in cities across America featuring rich traditions, including celebration in the form of festivals, parades, and oral histories. Also known as Freedom Day, it has continued to be a highly revered event across the country as a time for honoring one another and the memory of all those who endured slavery and especially those who moved from slavery to freedom. Whereas Juneteenth allows people of all races, nationalities, and religions in cities across the country to join hands to acknowledge a period in our history that shaped and continues to influence our society today. And whereas Juneteenth today celebrates African-American freedom while encouraging self-development and respect for all courtships. Now therefore be it resolved that Board of County Commissioners of Douglas County, Kansas hereby proclaim and celebrate June 19th, 2020 as Lawrence Juneteenth Celebration adopted this 17th day of June, 2020. I want to thank the Juneteenth Committee for providing that proclamation for us. Very important. And we'll move on to our consent agenda. We have five items on our consent agenda. Would any commissioner like to remove a consent agenda item for discussion?
No.
Being none, I'll ask if any member of the public has a consent agenda item that they'd like to have removed for discussion or public comment. For those of you who are new to our Zoom meetings, we have two options for the public to make comment. One is there at the courthouse and Sarah is there at the courthouse. Is anybody there to speak on a consent agenda item?
Does anybody have a consent agenda item they'd like to remove? We've got no public comment for that.
Great. And then we check with Jill Joliker, who's monitoring the online attendee room. And if you would like any piece of the consent item removed, do so by raising your hand. Jill, do you see anybody?
Nope, not that I can see.
Thank you very much. So I'll ask for a motion to approve consent agenda items, one, two, three, four, and five.
Moved to approve. Second.
Moved by Commissioner Russo, seconded by Commissioner Thelman. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes 3-0. We have two items on our regular agenda. The first is a planning department item and the second will be a discussion of the correctional facility. We'll start with the planning department item to consider rezoning Z 2000096, 8.5 acre at 892 E 661 Diagonal Road, County Route 1.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Mary Mueller. I'll be presenting this item and I'll work to get my screens shared here. Do you see the rezoning presentation? No, I don't think you do. Let's see, where is my screen? One moment.
You should be able to share, Mary. This is Jill. Let me know if you need some help.
Yeah, I practiced this earlier, so. There's a little bit too much stuff up here. Just. Find it again here.
You hover on the bottom of your screen. You should share, see share screen at the bottom of the middle center of your Zoom screen.
Okay, let's see. There it is. Yeah, hopefully this gets the right. Do you see it yet? Oh, sure, that's something I want to share. Let's see. Hmm. Let me try that again. If it doesn't share, I'll just do it without sharing, I guess. Let's see. Peace.
Mary, you can also email the presentation to me or Robin or Sarah and I can, we can do it too.
Okay, I'll try it one more time here. I am screen sharing. It says.
There you go.
Okay, I made a mistake right away. I have a CUP instead of a Z, so I think that's what was causing my problem. So this is actually, as you said, a rezoning application. It's for a property in the unincorporated town of Lone Star. And the request is to rezone from the GB, General Business, and AG2 Transitional Agricultural District to the V Village District. The property is at 892 E 661 Diagonal Road and it's about one half of an acre. This shows the location of the property. It's on the south side of E 661 Diagonal. And in the staff report, there was an attachment that showed the general boundaries that staff has identified for the small unincorporated towns that we would like to rezone to the Village District. We intended to be working on that by now, but since we can't go out and have the public meetings yet, we'll be doing that as soon as we can. This rezoning application is coming forward first because the property owner intended to sell the property and the lending institution they were working with did not want to lend money on a non-conforming use. And as you know, when the revised zoning regulations went forward in February of this year in the GB District, residential uses are no longer permitted. The district is meant to be much more specifically commercially oriented. The use, the residential use is non-conforming and it is protected in the regulations in that if it was destroyed, it could be rebuilt. But the lending institution wanted it to be a permitted use. And so the property owner initiated or applied for this rezoning. And as the rezoning was in process, the lender, I think, felt confident enough to go ahead and allow the sale because we now have a different property owner. This shows the property. It is developed with a residence and the rezoning does not propose any change of use. It's only to make this a permitted use in the district. The Lone Star is kind of an unusual town and that is almost completely encumbered with floodplain. The subject property is completely encumbered. So it has two overlay districts on it. It has the floodway fringe in pink and the floodway in red. No changes are being suggested to those overlay districts. And the property will still be subject to the floodplain management regulations, even if the base zoning is changed over to the Village District. So any redevelopment or any new development on this lot would require compliance with the county floodplain regulations. So these show the zoning districts. On the left, we see what it was before the zoning regulations changed. We had B2 on the top, which the general business, which did at the time allow residential uses. And then the A or agricultural at the bottom. The agricultural district converted to Ag2 because it was less than 20 acres and the B2 converted to general business. And so then we had the non-conforming use, which is the reason this rezoning is before you today. And in the staff report, we go through the findings of fact. It does comply with the recommendations in the long-range plan 2040 because the long-range comprehensive plan actually recommends developing a mean to protect and encourage the unincorporated small towns. So the Village District was created specifically for this purpose. There should be no detrimental effects on nearby properties because the Village District is more restrictive than the general business. Under the current zoning, a convenience store, a restaurant, any of those uses would be permitted and could be put into the site with a site plan. Under the village zoning, commercial uses are still allowed, limited commercial uses, but they require approval of a conditional use permit so that the compatibility with the surrounding properties and the character of the town can be evaluated. And there'd be no positive gain to the general public health and welfare and safety by the denial of the rezoning request and just due to the fact that the intention is to rezone the entire unincorporated town of Lone Star. Once we've had a chance to meet with the property owners and those general boundaries might change somewhat after we've met with the property owners, you know, but that was the general location that we felt would would likely be included. This item was taken to the planning commission in May and they voted unanimously to forward it to you today with a recommendation for approval. So the rezoning request is for you today and there's also a zoning resolution for you. I'll be happy to answer any questions and I don't know if the applicant is here today or the property owner.
Yeah, I'm not able to tell by the the list of attendees. So if the property owner is in the, is on and they do have a common or question, I'd ask them to raise their hand.
So we'll give a minute to make sure, see if the property owner is on. Want to speak to the commission about this item?
I've not seen anything.
No, and nobody there, Sarah. I'm taking by the shake of your head that you don't see anyone there. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Mary before we open this item up for public comment? I don't. Okay, neither do either of the other two commissioners. We'll open this item up for public comment. Again, if you're there to make public comment, let Sarah know in the courthouse. Sarah, do you see anyone?
I don't think we have anyone that wants to comment on this item. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Jill, anyone raising their hand on the participant room? Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back up to the commission for discussion and motions and votes.
I don't have any questions.
I don't. I don't either. It seems pretty straightforward.
Yeah, it does. It does me as well, and I'm happy to make a motion if that's all right with my colleagues. I'll make a motion to approve a request to rezone 0-20-0096, proclamable 8.5 acres located at 892 E 661 Diagonal Road, County Route 1, from General Business GB and AG-2 Transitional Agriculture Districts to V Village District.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Commissioner Russo. All those in favor say aye.
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 Passes 3-0. Thank you, Mary. We appreciate your time and work on that.
Thanks, Mary.
I will move on to our second item, which is the Douglas County Correctional Facility and a commission discussion. We'll turn this over to Sarah for a bit of an update.
Thank you, Commissioners. The commission asked, I had some requests to just put this item on our agenda to really allow the Board of County Commissioners to have an opportunity to discuss this. As the public knows, the Commissioners are not, our commission is small enough that they're not allowed to talk about these issues outside of commission meetings. So this is an opportunity for them to do that. We have no formal presentation planned and no speakers planned for this item. So I will turn it over to the commission.
Thank you, Sarah. Um, maybe I'll just start with a couple of comments on this. I appreciate putting this on the agenda. I think the last time we talked about this at a business meeting was, it was listed in Commissioner miscellaneous is when we talked about this item. It wasn't a regular agenda item. And then last week we had a work session and we met with representatives of quite a number of our criminal justice partners and had a discussion. We don't allow public comment typically in our work sessions. So this will give the public some opportunity for comment. My position on this really hasn't changed a whole lot and I'm hoping we continue to get some innovative thinking. And I'm not sure it's really that innovative, but just some new thinking from our criminal justice partners. Their behavior has changed. Some of their thoughts have changed. And so while encouraged with some of the ideas that we heard at our work session last week, I need to see those materialize because we have a crisis on our hands. We have a shrinking jail and we have lost options in other counties. I'm also still very concerned about cost and how we pay for this. And I know Sarah is working on working on maybe a different budget model, a different way of looking at the jail and that really hasn't changed. We don't really have any updates on that right now. And so, you know, I think we also met with the CJCC and I will admit that I'm frustrated with that conversation a little bit. I thought the conversation we had last week was very good. We heard a lot from our criminal justice partners and we really didn't hear a whole lot at CJCC. We need to make sure that our meetings make space and time for our criminal justice partners to work together publicly and so that the public can hear what ideas they have. We did hear a report on the racial inequities that if you hear that and aren't troubled, I'm not, I don't know what to say to you, to be honest. I just don't. And it's troubling to me and I know we don't have easy answers for that. But I think we need that group to really dig in and really do work. And they do seem committed to doing that work. I'm not saying that they aren't. They have done quite a bit and I really appreciate the work that that work group is doing on racial disparities. But, but I'm, I'm expecting and wanting more activity with that group. Because I, they needed to solve the immediate crisis and if that immediate crisis can inform how we move forward, if we move forward on a jail expansion, I think that's a really important conversation to have. So those are just some of my thoughts. They really haven't changed a whole lot from what we discussed two weeks ago, but I, I do think we want to talk about this more and more. We've got to push the conversation here as a county commission. And so I'll just, those are my opening comments.
Patrick, thank you. Um, I know that, you know, we've talked about this in our work session last week and we ran out of time. We were having, I think, a pretty good conversation, but we just, with it being a work session, we ran out of time and we were bumping up to our 5:30 meeting. So I was happy that we could get this on the agenda tonight so that we could continue our conversation, at least amongst the three of us. And I just want to touch base real quick on the CJCC. Our racial and ethnic disparities group, I did have a meeting today, that work group from CJCC. And we had a really good meeting and lots of great conversation. And I hope that we can bring that, that level that we had today to our next CJCC meeting and the engagement and the conversation because it was really, really good. But back to the jail, you know, last week, one of the things that I brought up with our partners was these, you know, we've been hearing for the last year, I think we got a report last year that talked about the number of failure to appear. And, and I, that's really been bothering and I keep asking about it. And so following the meeting last Thursday, I sent a draft. I had a few questions I had drafted that were just kind of background information for me so that I would have a little more working knowledge to, to think about kind of this crisis that we're facing out at the jail. And, and one of the things that I, I put in my email that I wanted to remind our partners, or I should say the criminal justice system, because we're going to remind people, we are not, this commission is not the criminal justice system. You know, we need to challenge them and I'm talking about the DA and the judges and the people that are actually involved. We don't arrest people. We don't charge them. We don't sentence them. But we have been telling them for years, we will write you, we will write a check. Bring us the programs, the ideas, the projects, the resources you need, tell us. And we have not been shy in our budgets, funding, you know, extra employees, studies, whatever we've needed to do if we thought it would reduce the population of the jail. And I'm starting to feel like maybe we haven't been getting all the ideas. And I, this pandemic really showed me that there obviously is a way to keep people out of jail, other than the fact that people just aren't going to bars. And so I am encouraging them and basically I'm challenging them right now, based, based on the limited information that's, that's coming in that, you know, it's, it's draft. There's, you got to dig a little bit deeper into some of these numbers, but I'm going to challenge these partners to find a way to keep all of these people with a failure to appear out of our jail. And if that means buying more electronic monitors, more house arrest, there's got to be something we can do because these people were not in jail, part of their failure to appear. So they must be okay to be out. Having them in jail to me is, is not a good, a good thing to do. So I want somebody to bring an idea to me. And if that means hiring more people to monitor them, if it means buying more equipment, you know, bring that to us and at least give us the opportunity to say, hey, we can, we can find the funds to buy more equipment and hire another employer too, to keep people out of the jail. So I don't know who's listening out there from our criminal justice system, but I appreciate their help and I, I know that a couple of them are still working on what they're going to get back to me and so they get back with me tomorrow. And then, you know, like I said, it's, it's all kind of draft numbers and it was from my background, but I'm really frustrated right now that, that, you know, I feel like we've been put in a really bad position because we are not the criminal justice system. And we've been just saying, how, how can we help and how can we get this done? And, and now we're seeing that obviously there are some things that can be done, but we need to keep it that way. We, we don't need to go back to the way things have been done and, and sit here and worry about a crisis at the jail when we know that we might be able to control that population a little better. So on that subject, that's all I have for right now and thank you.
I would add before maybe Commissioner Thelman speaks, I have on the agenda for next week, an additional update. Our criminal justice coordinator, Mike Brower, is planning on a presentation to follow up on the work session we had last week. And we have had continual meetings with our criminal justice partners, the district court, the municipal court, Lawrence Police Department, District Attorney's Office, Criminal Justice Services, as well as our criminal justice, our criminal justice coordination team. And they've been, they have been talking about additional alternatives that can be developed at every level and, and exploring those with each of those partners. And then want to bring that back to the commission for additional discussion and conversation. In some cases, you know, we need more data and, and that's been one of the pieces that we found and, you know, we're in a constant search of better data to help to drive our decision-making, to make sure we're having the best impact. But I just want to preview that we will have continued conversation on this next week.
So I'm, Sarah, I'm really glad to hear you say that, that we'll get that kind of detailed report next week. I think that's what, I think what we're all longing for is some, some details, some, some, some sense that there is organized effort on this to not just recognize that we're in a crisis, but we know some of the, we now know what's possible in some of the areas that hasn't seemed possible before. And so this seems like it's just, it's our best opportunity to take this crisis and turn it into maybe a radical shift in how we're doing things and maybe save our community from having to pay for a revision and expansion of the jail. And so, and also I think to meet this moment in terms of being really sensitive to the racial equity issue and just the raised awareness of the pain out in the community. I think we, we have just got to meet this moment and it can't just be the commission. It has to be those folks who actually do the arresting and the, you know, the processing of the cases and the, you know, decisions on whether folks get a citation or get a warrant for their arrest. I just, I think we've seen a glimmer of hope that we can do way more and do it way faster than, than we thought before. So what, I guess what I'm really hoping for, I didn't sense the urgency with the CJCC that I want. And maybe they're not the right group to very quickly make some plans and decisions. But I really, I, I want to know how we're going to get on this quickly. So is each of, is each member of the criminal justice system creating a plan that they're going to share with us? Are they going to know what data points we're going to need? Are they going to come back and meet with us regularly and report off? You know, what, what are their individual actions in this moment and how are they talking to each other and working with each other as a team? I don't think the CJCC is really set up to do that quick work. So I'm wondering, do we have a structure or even if it's informal, are people, it sounds like Mike is doing that work with members of the criminal justice system. But are, do we have a sense of, of getting a regular, regular feedback so we know that there's progress, so that we can reassure the community that we mean it when we say we are looking for a radical change and a shift of the jail horizon?
Yes, Commissioner Thelman, that's, that's what, when I talk about the, the six partners of the criminal justice system that were on our work session last week, Mike Brower and I are meeting with them every other week to continue these conversations. And that includes the district court, the municipal court, includes the district attorney's office, includes the Lawrence Police Department, and it includes our criminal justice services. So our, our alternatives to incarceration team, as well as our criminal justice coordinator and data analyst, Mike Brower and Matt Cravens and myself. And those conversations are regular and, and we're having them. And, and that is the group that I think represents the, the most folks, the most like stops in the criminal justice system that can have those conversations. You're correct. Our Criminal Justice Coordinating Council includes community members, Udora Police, Baldwin Police, KU Police. It's a big group and, and that group is committed to meeting monthly to continue work because I think it's going to take all of us frankly to, to do this work. But we have a more, we have a smaller team that is meeting more frequently to really attend. Oh, and I forgot to include the sheriff's office. I'm so sorry about that. Yes, the sheriff's office is included in that team as well. And so, and, and the jail pop, and the jail team is very closely helping us monitor jail population issues and making sure that we're able to maintain social distancing and other protective factors inside our jail. So that group is going to continue to have those conversations as we go forward. And, and then we're, you know, they're reporting back to you next week, which is two weeks from the date they talked to you last. If we can keep on the schedule through budget, I think you're going to be, I'll be hearing from this group almost every other week. I would say we need all of our partners and everyone on that list, including the Lawrence Police Department, to continue to be able to be active in this work. We've got a lot of systems that don't talk to each other. We've got data in different places. Many of these programs take multiple partners to be successful. And so I am heartened by the change in some of the, the change that we've seen here about how, how important it is to manage this number. And really it took a pandemic for us to, to, to open our eyes to some of those alternatives. And, and we've seen great progress. So I think while we keep our eye on the current focus of how do we keep our current jail population safe from COVID-19, we're going to learn a lot about what the impact of that data and those programs will have on our jail projections for future. for future years. And so and and I've asked Mike and Matt and Dr. Cravens to they got to walk and chew gum at the same time. They got to be able to do both of these things, focus on the immediate issue and have conversations about the long term horizon. And and I think that's our challenge to all of our criminal justice partners.
Thank you for that. I really do think that the more the commission is made aware of progress, plans and progress, the better off we'll be. Because it's people are really looking to us for some answers, you know, for some logical explanation of of why there's this sudden shift in 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 course. And it's hard to explain without kind of plans and data and and a sense of you know, cohesive work that's shared with us. So so I really appreciate that. I would like to add one piece to that puzzle that has a more long term role to play. But if we don't start on it now, I think we'll miss the opportunity. And we know that there are state statutes that impact the population in our jail, like mandatory sentencing guidelines, drug laws. You know, other parts of state statute that that may be causing people to you know, that that might have an impact on our jail population. And so my my question is to the commissioners. I know on the behavioral health side, when we hired Stuart Little to help shepherd us through the legislative session and way before they ever started, we had our we had our work done. We had our requests solid. We had our conversations lined up. And and ultimately, we were successful getting getting a generous annual amount of money from the state for our behavioral health campus. And I wonder if we ought to take that same tack on this issue and see if we can bring Stuart or his company in to help us begin to think about what legislation is needed, who we need to talk to, what are the you know, because I I mean, we've talked about that. We've kind of asked citizens to start working and to speak again and let their voices be heard. But I don't think that's ever happened. And I think maybe it might take the county's lead and kind of professional, you know, strategic approach to help move that part of this along. So what do you think?
Yeah, this is Sarah. As just for a little background for the public, Stuart Little is a part of Little Government Relations, which has which is a which is lobbying firm in Topeka that has been really helpful in helping us get various state agencies together to help look at how we have state funding for the Crisis Center. We have a proposal from Mr. Little, who has extensive background in county government and multiple both human services and local government, public sector clients to broaden his scope for the for the fiscal, well, it wouldn't be our fiscal year, but like their fiscal year, starting in July through the next year. And and you have that proposal will be a part of your proposed 2021 budget that I am frantically trying to put the final touches on. So you will have that request to expand his work as a part of your budget deliberations. And and as the commission is aware, we are able to make adjustments in the current year with some for some dollar amounts and and to to be able to start some of those programs early. So you'll be seeing that in July.
Commissioner Thelman, thanks for bringing that up because when I was talking about how we're not really part of the criminal justice system, you know, everybody forgets this all starts in Topeka, you know. Even our criminal justice folks here in Douglas County, they don't make the laws, you know, they're just doing, you know, working with what they can work with. And so I there's part of me that's very hopeful that maybe in light of what our current affairs, that somebody in Topeka is going to, you know, maybe take justice reform seriously and and start that that conversation. They've kind of skirted around the issue for the last couple of years, but I don't think it's been serious. And so maybe somebody there will now finally step up and 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 see that there need to be some changes made.
Yeah, I think I think we're seeing, you know, even in the past couple of days, some changes in legislation about police reform. And and you know, I mean, so I think it's not it's not it's not out of the realm of possibility that this pandemic and what we've seen with the murder of George Floyd and others is changing minds, that in this moment, things have changed. And it it's certainly, especially for those who have advocated that we not do a jail expansion or that we needed alternatives to incarceration. I understand the frustration of you know, you're finally getting it. But what I want to make sure is that we're not so focused on we need to make space for people to have these innovations, you know, that and maybe they're not that innovative, but these new ideas. And that includes at the state level. I think we need to say, hey, things have changed. And so I'm supportive of what you ask for, Commissioner Thelman, because I think we need to, we need to, you know, just as we're putting pressure on our criminal justice partners locally, because they've been able to do things that, quite honestly, we heard they couldn't do before. And now it's it's, well, maybe we can do that. And we have to acknowledge that there's been some leadership changes there. And and that those leadership changes and even changes of opinion, such as with our city commission, are inspiring new approaches to this. I think I think if we can get that at the state level as well, that would be great. That would it isn't that we haven't been asking for it. We have been asking for it. But now we're in a new moment where we're, there's some there's there's just some new ideas forming that maybe people have finally enlightened to these ideas, I guess.
Yeah, well, I I think so. And I think, you know, watching, watching what it took again, last year with the Behavioral Health Initiative, it was, it took a long time. There was a lot of preparation. There was a lot of homework. There was a lot of documentation and strategizing and so many conversations before we even got to have conversations. And I just think we need, I I'm glad to know that 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 Stuart's firm is is something that we'll get to consider putting in our budget. And I would be interested to know what he thought a timeline would be in terms of when we would need to begin to you know, start the process. So that we are just in the right place next year when the session begins and we are on top of it from from day one. So I think that's what it takes. So so thank you for the support of that idea. There's another one. And this is one that I, you know, I thought that we, you know, sometimes have talked about the possibility of having a public defender's office, you know, for kind of efficiencies and kind of single mindedness, kind of focus on the need to work these cases thoroughly but efficiently. And 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 I thought that we understood that that wasn't possible, that the state wouldn't allow that. But I I'm wondering if that's still the case, if that's something that we might might pursue. That we have great, we have great defense attorneys in this town. But I I wonder if we had a public defense bar. Just what if there would be advantages to that to our system, if we would find some.
If I remember the conversation, I'm sorry. I had a delay. I thought you had stopped. If I remember the conversation correctly, the we had asked about that at a meeting, we'd asked out of the judges. And the chief judge at the time had given us kind of a list of I guess, when you decide to go that route, there's all kinds of things that kind of tie you to the state. And you don't really have some freedoms and flexibilities, I guess. And so at that time, they didn't think it was a good idea. You know, Patrick had mentioned change of leadership. I don't know what the new chief judge thinks of public defenders or if anything's changed in the couple of years since we first had that conversation. But it's probably, you know, definitely something to bring up and just find out what the pros and cons of that are. Because I know at the time when we when we were kind of told what the cons were, it was like, you know, this this really isn't maybe such a great thing. Like I said, maybe something's changed and attitudes have changed. And so it's probably a good question to ask.
I I do know that that has been on the list that our Mike Brower has been talking about with various partners. It is obviously involves multiple sectors and the defense bar. So it's definitely on the horizon. And and I think it's something that we can give you a little more detail about as we go along.
Sarah, since we're making a list, it sounds like we're starting to put together a list of things as we engage our criminal justice partners. You know, Michelle and Commissioner Geruso mentioned, you know, our our pocketbook is open and we have money coming in. We think from, you know, in response to COVID-19 from the state and and through the federal's government. I I wonder if another judge is possibly, you know, if that would increase court processing. Is that another option? Notice to appear. I mean, I'm just adding all these things to the list because some of these things we visited before. And we've seen a real difference in notice to appears, you know. And so I would just add that, you know, I know space becomes an issue with with another judge, you know, and that there are other challenges. As Commissioner Geruso points out, sometimes when we add public defenders, we we may have other challenges and we got to weigh those against each other. But I I just want to make sure that our criminal justice partners hear us. Nothing should be off the table. We do not have we, I think, and Mike can correct me if I'm wrong, we're asking them. And I want to be really clear because I find if we're just sort of nebulous, we need to be clear on what we're asking. We need to reduce the jail population by 25%. What was in my conversation with Mike, you know, the number that we're shooting for, it's a significant number. And so nothing should be off the table as they consider these ideas. Because we've got to do something immediately that hopefully will inform the future. And Mike, I see you're on the call, so if I got that number wrong, please correct me.
Commissioners, this is Mike Brower. No, sir, you are correct. We the number we, without a ton of data behind it, the but what we're proposing to partners is every user of the county jail reduce or use each by 25%. And we're working to try and come up with exactly what those that number would look like for each user. That's proving challenging, but the bottom line is we need significant reductions by everyone.
So on on that note, significant reductions by everyone. I I was able to listen a little bit to last night's city commission meeting as they were talking about some of the police reforms they're thinking about and quite a long list. And I know this is a moment where they don't have their permanent chief, but they have a fantastic acting chief interim. So it was a really lively conversation, but it was, I'm I'm just it seems like it's a great opportunity for the city and the county to try and to understand each other's systems a little better when it comes to criminal justice and what their police department's role is in our system. And for them to understand more about what our role is, what are what all of these departments are, these offices are, we're talking about. So I guess I'm wondering if Mike, are you having any conversations with folks over at the city in terms of you know, kind of not reinventing the wheel or kind of helping the city staff or city commissioners understand what's already been done on like mobile response or you know, some of these, some of these new ideas or how or how how we see that the sheriff's department and the police department might change their interaction on the street so there are fewer fewer arrests or more citations and fewer arrests. Like, how do we, how do we have this relationship, this conversation with the city? So that it's positive and productive? Can you work some magic?
Yeah, Commissioner, this is Mike Brower, Criminal Justice Coordinator. And so we haven't directly had those conversations. We have reached out to some of the city leaders and offered to provide that support. I I do think the city is an interesting spot where they have made a decision on what we need as a county without gathering information, without listening to the conversations we've been having for the last five to six years. And so their leadership is really far behind in this game. But given that they gave you a clear message that they don't want you to expand the jail, I think it behooves them to catch up, to catch up quickly and to generate opportunities that we have not seen from them before. I think it's the best way to put that.
Yeah, Mike, I was hoping that, you know, Commissioner Kelly, you had mentioned, and my weeks are mixed up. I don't know if it was last week or the week before you mentioned you had a list. And one of the things you had mentioned was possibly meeting with the city commissioner and talking about this. But what I would really like to see is since we're not the criminal, as I said a couple of times already tonight, we are not the criminal justice system. And as Mike pointed out, you know, the cities hasn't been involved in this conversation. And I think it would be really important for them to understand the system that they're trying to change before they tried to change it. So I would love if they're willing to, to have maybe Mike and Pam on behalf of the CJCC, give them a presentation, talk about the things that have been done. Maybe have the DA there and the judges to also talk about how they all work together and how they all play a part in in what the, you know, as was mentioned today in the the meeting, the points of contact in the justice system, you know, from from the time somebody either gets pulled over or stopped to the time that they end up in in jail and sentenced. You know, all those points of contact, what we've done. And and there's several reasons for that. I mean, they really need to understand the role that the police department plays in it. But they also need to understand the the money that's invested. For instance, you know, all these pre-trial, all the alternatives to arrest or jail. You know, we're funding all of that, even for municipal cases. Are they aware of that? You know, how much do we spend a year on, you know, these folks for municipal cases so that there's so nobody's sitting in jail simply because they can't afford an ankle bracelet or or any kind of monitoring or testing. We pay for all of that. And I think they need to see that and understand how that plays into the the system. You know, we've been putting, setting money aside for a couple of years now for the DA's office to pay for the extra manpower they were going to need when the Lawrence Police Department finally started using their body cams. So, you know, there's another piece of the puzzle that we've been involved in and and funding. So I I think if there's a way that Mike and Pam and and Charles and a couple of the judges could, you know, have a little little meeting for the city commissioners and help them understand how the justice system is is working or not working, but what programs are in place and how this domino effect with the points of contact. I I think that would be, I mean, at least to me, I think that might be a a better start than their body sitting down with our body when none of us are really, you know, we're not criminal justice folks.
Commissioners, just to chime in a little bit here and to kind of reinforce what Mike said earlier. I did have conversations with the city manager last week. I know that was on their discussion item list for last night. I think it is their plan to invite us, the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council, for a conversation with the city commission to really provide some background on what we've done so far. And and I want to make it clear here. We have implemented numerous alternatives to incarceration programs in the last five years. And 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 the commission has graciously funded those and encouraged funding for those programs, Drug Court, Drug court, behavioral health court, women's substance abuse diversion, pre-trial release, house arrest. Mike can fill in the ones that I'm, I'm forgetting. And so, but we have a lot more work to do. And, and so it's going to take everyone to really be at the table, to really make the progress we need moving forward. The system is designed to, to not work together well. I mean, it's, it's called separation of powers. It's, and so it's, it's takes a lot of conversation and understanding of the role the judge plays, the role the district attorney plays and, and those processes. But we, we certainly have a lot of work to do. And I look forward to that, to Mike having that opportunity as well as others to really provide a broad overview of everything we've done in the last several years and, and hopefully catch the commission up to some of the important progress we've made over the last few years.
And I, yeah, thank you, Sarah. I, I would just add to that, I think, you know, I want to be careful. I, I hope, I think this conversation shouldn't be interpreted as us. I, I really am conscious that we need to, we need to work with the city. They need to work with us. And this is, it's a terrific opportunity for us to do some incredibly important work together as we're all learning in this crisis, what each of us can do that, that will serve our citizens better, that will get, keep people out of our jail who shouldn't be there and just improve, improve the quality of life in Douglas County and the city of Lawrence. And so I don't, I, I guess I kind of like to restart this moment and say, gosh, it'd be great to have the opportunity to work with our partners at the city, to do some learning together and to make some changes and some plans together that really move this issue along. But to do it in a time sensitive way, because there have been years and years of work on this. And now suddenly it's just accelerated exponentially. And, and it's great, we have an opportunity that we didn't have before. But this is an opportunity also for us to, you know, kind of shift, shift our positions and, and be positive, good, productive partners with the city and they with us. And that's, I think that would be a great thing for us to work toward together, so.
I just, just to add to Commissioner Thelman's, I think we, I was encouraged two weeks ago after we heard response from the city, the judges, law enforcement, sheriff, police department, that they accepted our challenge. And they took it in the nature that it was meant, not in a place of shame or anger or, you know, maybe a touch of frustration, but that, you know, I think is understandable. And I don't, I want us to be thoughtful about creating a balance of pressure where we're in a, a productive zone of work, but also understanding that if we start slinging arrows down Massachusetts Street and throwing each under the other, under the bus, that doesn't do our community any good. And the same is true with our criminal justice partners as well. We, we need to, we need to challenge them. We need to, you know, really ask them, be very clear on what our expectations are and what our hope is, what our aspirations are. But also understand that just the nature of change, the nature of admitting that what you once said before was impossible is now possible, is a vulnerable place to be. And that's hard. And so, you know, but we don't have time. I want to make sure that we're clear that it's not something we can sort of, gosh, I hope we get there. That isn't the issue, it is now. Now is the time. And so I, I think it's important upon us as a body and Mike and your work and, and connecting those folks together to find that balance, to find that productive zone where we can really get things done. But also not being kind to each other is also important as well. And recognizing the places that, that are elected positions and are the constituencies that we represent, the pressures that they put upon us. I think that's, that's really critical.
Commissioners, if I can say one more comment, this is Mike Brower again. Well, actually I have two comments, but first of all, you know, I, I think I felt the frustration of Commissioner Jeruso and Commissioner Thelman feeling like maybe in the past they didn't get the full picture or that, and so forth with what was possible with the criminal justice system. I, I just want to be clear that in our discussions as a group, we're not looking at new programs. We're not looking at new initiatives. We're looking at things that have been recommended to us by experts who've come in and worked with us that have worked in other jurisdictions around the country. That previous leadership was not interested in, or it wasn't a good time for them to be engaged in that type of initiative or procedure. So, and now there is a very unified passion for moving forward with this from both the municipal judge and the, the chief district judge from DA Branson and the leadership from Sheriff Kenny McGovern, which we're going to lose, has been instrumental in this. So I, I just want you to be aware that, that we didn't find new things, we didn't uncover new rocks. We have new cooperation and that's how we move forward. And, and the second piece, for anyone who's wanting to get more information on what work you have been supporting with the, the criminal justice work here in Douglas County. Thanks to Carrie Britt and to our GIS programmers. We just launched today a new hub website for the CJCC. And so I changed the name on my screen for that website. You can go to that and get more information. Carrie's also going to be putting that out on social media. We're trying to make it easier to find good information about the programs that are in place and how they are functioning and trying to keep the public informed.
Commissioners, I was just on that website and it's phenomenal. So it very clearly outlines, and this has been, as, as many of you know, this has been a directive of mine for, for Mike for a period of time is that we have to do a better job of getting the information out there on the work that we're doing, the work that all of us are doing. It's not enough, but it's a start. And so I, I would highly encourage folks to check out that link that Mike's got on his Zoom profile.
Hey, Mike, I just wanted to say it's an important distinction to make that there's, you know, when, when there's kind of barriers and, and, you know, diff, when, when you have a breakthrough and suddenly there's just the, the unified effort and cooperation that makes all the difference in the world. And sometimes that just takes time or a different mix of people or whatever. But thank you for that clarification, that's helpful, and thank you for sticking with it. And I guess my question is, I feel like you suddenly have an enormous, you have had a big role to play anyway. And then suddenly we're looking to you to be the, you know, be the fellow who's going to, you know, weave all this together in a crisis and help us come out the other end with a smaller population in our jail and, and a, you know, and people who are doing things differently and, and working together in different ways. So do, do you have the help you need to get this done in the timeframe we're talking about? Is this a possible, is this possible for you?
We're still trying to figure that out. We have meetings coming up in, in actually the next few days to ask some of those commissioners, Commissioner. I, I will say, you know, having Dr. Matt Cravens as part of the team has just been tremendous. You guys have seen some of his work already. And, and county manager Sarah Polinsky has echoed your same comments. So I, I just want you to know, we feel supported and understand if we have needs that we will bring those to you. So I, I appreciate that. But I'm just coordinating these efforts. You know, our criminal justice leaders are leading that.
Okay, thank you.
So this is a public hearing item, so we do take public comment on this. Sarah, can you get a raise of hands of the number of people who would like to comment on this in the courthouse?
I think I have one, two, maybe two.
Okay. And Jill, I, I see one person raised their hand on the attendees list. If those online could also raise their hand. We just, we don't really have a time limit here at the county commission, but if we have a lot of people who want to comment, we, we sometimes will put some time limits on. With just three, it looks like we have three people. I see two at the courthouse and one online. We won't put a time limit on it, if that's okay with my fellow commissioners. And we'll just invite those people to join us. And so why don't we, why don't we go maybe a little bit back and forth? We'll start maybe with Sarah at the courthouse and invite that first person up. And we'll take some public comment here. This is our first public comment live at the courthouse, so bear with us. I'm sure it will go great.
Whichever you want to come forward first, I'd just ask you to come sit at this, at that seat so we can maintain proper social distancing. I, I'm going to put my mask on just because we're getting closer together than we've been. And then I'm going to turn the computer around and you'll be able to see the commission and they'll be able to hear you. If I can get it on quickly. Okay. All right. Can you see them?
Yeah, I can come down a little bit maybe.
It's about as. Okay.
Is that good? Can you hear me?
Yeah, if you could state your name for us and that, that would be great. And your address, we usually ask for your address as well.
There, I'm James Windholz and I live at 1320 Massachusetts Street. So we keep talking about all of this money that we can't find. And I'm pretty sure it was two years ago that we voted as, as a community to not fund the expansion. I, I don't know if we voted again since then to fund it. I, I don't think we did. That was one thing, but maybe that's something that you'd get back to me because I don't think you guys interact on these. So that'd be great next week because I'll be back. So that's the first one. And then I don't know why we're talking about shooting arrows down Mass Street. Was that just like supposed to be funny rhetoric? Like, this is a big problem and people are dying in our community, in our prison. And that's not, that's not very funny to me. So like, I don't know, this just seems like a situation we could do a little bit better. Black lives matter. Thank you.
And maybe we'll do an online one while we bring the next person up, Sarah.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, yeah. Joanna Herter, 3007 West 29th Terrace here in Lawrence. Good to see you all on my computer screen. And I'm sure you probably aren't surprised that I'm happy to hear some of these questions being raised and talked about more seriously. And Michelle, I've been concerned for a very long time and especially about the failure to appear numbers. And so I'm grateful that you're putting a little, asking some questions around that and putting a little pressure there. For sure. I hear a lot of talk about wanting to really figure out the problem, look at root causes, get good data. And so I want to commend to you the study that has already been done by the Center for Advancing Correctional Excellence by Dr. Danielle Ruth. And it talks about all kinds of things we are doing, things we could be doing, the, the proven effectiveness of various types of alternatives, but also looking at the, the support systems in our community, right? Because it's not only the criminal justice system that affects the jail population, it's also people's access to housing, people's access to healthcare, people's access to other types of services that are needed. And so that report is a good start on getting some hard data on some of those things. I believe you all have copies, but can certainly hook you up if you don't. You don't have copies, oh my, okay. We will get copies sent to you soon. And then we also have a good opportunity of the Vera Institute that works on criminal justice issues across the country is willing to do a free study for Douglas County. And their only hindrance right now is some data that they're trying to get, that they're having trouble accessing. So in your conversations with various partners, and I believe the sheriff's office in particular, questions about what's holding that up and encouragement for them to send that data. That's another free source of what could potentially be some really helpful information to address some of the structural issues to improve the criminal justice system. So I appreciate these conversations happening and I'll continue to listen and I will get that report sent to you all soon. Thanks.
Thank you. Sorry, we have another one there at the courthouse.
Hi.
Hi.
For hearing, now commissioners, I appreciate, let me be here. This is my first county meeting. My name is Ramona Yoder. I live at 1332 East 19th Street. And I heard a lot of talk today about ideas and just what I heard was a lot of words. And personally, I think action is what is needed. We all know, and we've all known for a long time, that there is a problem with our justice system. And it's nice, not nice, I shouldn't say. It's more comfortable to think that those problems don't happen in our homes. And they do happen here. I have seen them happen here. I know many people who have seen them happen here. I just mean injustices in general for everybody. And that is not okay. It will never be okay. We need to be accountable, we need to be responsible, and we need to do more than just talk. So I know that things don't just happen overnight. And as mentioned, I know that you guys don't just snap your fingers and fix the police department or the sheriff's office or things like that. But what you can do is take action. You can make sure that things that we, the people want to happen, do happen. So as I sit here before you, I just ask that you please be accountable. I ask that whatever power you do have, you use to highly consider defunding our police department and putting those funds towards things that could be more effective in our community, like combating homelessness, things that can help towards mental health, things that can help towards domestic violence, things that can help prevent having to make arrests, that prevent incarceration, that prevent having to put people in jail. I also ask that you do not move forward with the jail expansion. I also ask that you think of black lives and how they matter and how they don't matter right now and a bunch of other lives, like immigrant lives and trans lives and a lot of lives. You hear people say all lives matter a lot and they certainly do, but they don't here right now. They don't in America, they don't in Kansas, and they don't in Lawrence. And I would just ask that you all take the privileges that you have and you are accountable and that you make Lawrence safe for all of us. And I also ask that Montez Washington Jr. be set free without bail. I ask that we no longer have cash bail. And that is all that I have to ask of you right now, but I'm sure I will also be back. And thank you for hearing me out. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah, I think that's all the public comment that we have there, the courthouse and online. So any other final comments before, this wasn't an action item, it's just for discussion. Any other comments from commissioners before we move on to appointments? Okay. Oh, we'll move on to our appointments. I do believe we have one appointment. And that was for Patty, I hope I get this right, Beatles. Does anybody know Patty? I read her resume. She has been recommended for the Heritage She has been recommended for the Heritage Conservation Council. I'm happy to recommend Patty if, or we can table it to our next meeting. I know we got this kind of late.
If you're making a motion, I'll second.
I'll make the motion.
I, I don't know her personally, but I'm.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to appoint Patty Beatles to the Heritage Conservation Council. And seconded by Commissioner Russo. Sorry about that. All those, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Thelman, if you could turn on your mic and say aye again.
Aye.
There we go. Thank you. Passes 3-0. I don't think we had any other appointments unless Commissioners have them. Okay. Next is general public comment. We've been through some public comment and so we'll open that. Sarah, do we have anybody there at the courthouse who would like to speak?
We don't have anyone for general public comment.
Thank you. And any attendees in the attendee room, Jill, with their hand raised? Okay, doesn't look like it. So we'll move from general public comment to Commissioner and Administrator miscellaneous. And we'll turn it over to Sarah. Sarah, you're on mute.
One of these days, man, we'll get it right. All right. Thank you, Commissioners. You have a copy of my weekly memo as a part of the packet. There are a couple items I want to point out. One of them, next week, we've talked a little bit about next week so far. Next week, we will start our in-person meetings. So the Commissioners will be here in person for those meetings unless I hear differently from the Commission tonight. Our plan is to have you in, in the building next, next Wednesday. We will start with a work session on our integrated crisis team that is a colla, that you've heard a little bit about at our work session, which is the partnership we have with LMH Health and Burt Nash for behavioral health intervention in the ER until we get the Crisis Center up and running and how we want to expand that team as we, as we begin the building process on the, on the Crisis Center. So I'm excited for you to have that update. It will be a really good discussion about how we continue to move forward with that. So that, and then we will begin our budget conversations in early July. So as I mentioned earlier, we are wrapping up the proposed budget process. And so I will, we will be scheduling then budget conversations starting in that last week in June. So I'll be, we'll be releasing that calendar as well. On your memo are, is a, wanted to point out that the, as, as the Commission is aware, we had a work session earlier this year about Douglas County's involvement with the Government Alliance for Race and Equity and our internal team working on equity, both for our internal organization and in the community. And one of those steps that we're, is involved in is a racial equity employee survey. So there's a memo about that in there and our intent to, we've, we had a department head meeting last week where we shared that with department heads and our intent is to get that employee survey out later this summer. So that information's on there. Also, as the Commission's aware, we have a numerous, we have numerous agreements with the City of Lawrence for a number of services that are funded jointly. Some of those involve our dispatch center, 911, planning, sustainability. And, and one of the largest of those is our partnership on the Lawrence Douglas County Fire Medical System. That was an initiative that we did some initial work between the city and the county last year in 2019 and late 2018. And the joint agreement from the city staff and the county staff was to issue an RFP, to hire a consultant to help us continue this work. You know, there's a lot of work here in terms of determining what best practices are to provide some recommendations on how to change our financing model, if we want to change our financing models. And honestly, with the, with the kind of projects in front of staff currently with, you know, COVID work, it's, it's just, it's just getting harder and harder for us to find time to do that. So I think there's some real value in bringing a third party in to help look at us objectively from the outside and, and to provide us with some impact or input on, on what we would want to do with that agreement moving forward. So in your packet, there is that draft request for proposals and I plan to work with the city office to release that, those proposals. And we will keep you updated on our progress on that as we go along. And with that, Commissioners, that's all I have.
Thanks, Sarah. Any questions for Sarah or miscellaneous items, Commissioners?
I don't have anything this evening.
I, I do have one that I wanted to report back to you. I don't know if you remember, but that we had an invitation to meet with kind of leaders of the Watkins Museum and the Lawrence Art Center and Theater Lawrence to, they wanted to talk about the impact that COVID has had on their organizations. And so I met with them for, with a Zoom meeting as well as Vice Mayor Brad Finkelde and Porter Arneil and Diane Stoddard. I think that was, I think that was all of us. It was a really good, kind of heartbreaking, but really good conversation. They made a very powerful presentation of what has happened to their organizations, what, what is at risk right now with their inability to have events, to have performances, pretty much just to be shut down. And they tallied up about a million dollars worth of loss at this point. And each one, considering whether they can keep their employees, and particularly the art center, was talking about 36 jobs and beyond that, about 250 to 200 artists who depend on them for, you know, for, for that connection to sell their art, show their art, be in that network of artists. And so I, it was so, it was really a good presentation. For me, what some of the pain is out there that we kind of hear about generally, we hear a lot about lots of different kinds of businesses that are impacted in the service industry. Everybody knows and loves restaurants and has been, you know, concerned about that. But these folks, I think, are kind of the last, they, they are sometimes left out of that picture. And so I guess I'm wondering, they, they need to elevate their story. They're not necessarily looking to us for, you know, a bailout or anything. They know that there's the state economic recovery funds through the Spark program potentially coming. But I wondered if you all would be, if, if there would, if they might bring this to our agenda for just a public presentation so that it's more, it's a story that is heard by more than just me. And I don't know if we have time in this budget season, but it's, you know, their issue is going to last a long time. So just wondering if you guys would be up for that.
I, I think that would be fine. I, I, I'm very concerned about it. So I would appreciate hearing from them. I'll just, you know, for our fellow commissioners and for the public, today I submitted a couple of recommendations for the Mid-America Arts Alliance, which is providing some resilience funds up to $100,000 for a number of our arts organizations that have been hit by this. It's not a difficult form to do, to make that recommendation. And, and once they get those recommendations, their board looks at it and reaches out to the arts organization individually. Because they're really hurting right now and they're looking especially for those organizations like the Art Center, like the Leeds Center, like Theater Lawrence, and even smaller organizations that have had a huge community impact and, and need these funds to continue, continue their work. So again, I'll say that, that's a Mid-America Arts Alliance. And so, yeah, I'm super supportive of what you just talked about, Commissioner Thelman, and would be happy for that. But I just also want to give the public and maybe fellow commissioners some ways of connecting them with some other granting opportunities. I think it'd be great to hear from the public about those organizations which you want to see continue and get through these tough times.
So, well, thanks, Patrick. And I'm so glad you've got a connection to some, some real help in this moment. They sure need it. But, so Sarah, is that something we could, could you reach out to Steve and talk about when they might? I think it would take three of them to be organized and be able to come together for a presentation. I don't know, you have a better sense of what our agenda can hold right now, but.
I'll certainly reach out to them and see if we, when we can get it, give them some time to get prepared and get on our.
Okay. Okay. I think Steve, Steve is kind of acting as the front, the front person for this. So maybe just a phone call to him would, would get that done. So, or I'd be glad to have him reach out to you.
Either way.
Okay. Thank you.
I did, maybe I was a little, normally I do give you some sort of update on COVID planning and our Cars Act, our CARES Act funding from the state. The news here is that I don't have more news. That, that's the news right now. We are desperately trying to gather more information on cars, I got, why do I say cars? CARES Act funding round one, which will come to the, come to counties in this first round of funding. And we've been told there's a toolkit and a webinar coming. And so as soon as we get that information, we will definitely put it all together. And I've got a good group of staff ready for that information to put it together and update the commission and, and look for further direction.
Thank you, Sarah. The only thing I, I would, a miscellaneous item I have, and it relates to the jail, but I, I want to keep us front and center on the racial disparities. And, and thank you, Michelle, for meeting with that group today. You know, we talked about the total number at the jail in our earlier discussion. But it, it's a real concern to me about where are those points of contact where bias may be presenting itself. Like I said earlier, that data is, is shameful. I don't know another way to say it. And we've got to do work on it. I'm excited about the work we're doing with GARE and, and really appreciate that. But we, we need to keep focused on that. And those aren't easy solutions. As I think one of our public commenter said, it's not something we can just turn a key and fix. It's going to be a long sustained effort. But I, anything, if, if there's opportunities from that racial inequity group to come and speak to us, you know, even, you know, I know they're talking to CJCC, but I'm, I'm just very interested in continuing to hear more. Sarah, as your group works, you know, what policy things do we have in place that are causing inequities based on race within our, within our government? I just want to not lose track of that. That's such an important part of our work. Any other comments before we adjourn?
No.
Okay. Well, thank you all.
Just that it'll be great to see you guys in person next week. Yeah.
It will be socially distanced. And, and I guess we should say that. I'm sorry to hear that it sounds almost like an afterthought from Sarah is, is our COVID-19 preparations. And we need to remind everybody that while we may be done with the pandemic, it is not done with us. So keep washing those hands. Stay socially distant. Do all those things that have kept us healthy so far.
Commissioner Kelly, there, we do have a hand raised in the attendees. I don't know if you want, I just wanted to let you know that. I'll leave that to you.
And we've closed our, unless the other Commissioners want to hear that, we were just about to adjourn. We did have public comment. And so we can, we'll be back next week. You're always welcome to reach out to Commissioners by email or by phone. Always happy to visit with, with folks if they have something to share with us. But we have passed the public comment portion of our agenda. Okay, with that, we are adjourned.